Okay, I'd like to, uh, come on, Chief, what do you need? Okay, sounds good, thanks. Okay, I'd like to call the liquor license hearing for February 6, 2023 to order. The applicant is Apache LLC doing business as Bonnie's, address seventeen twenty-eight, West Delgonquin Road. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod?
Present.
Commissioner Mills?
Present.
Commissioner Arnett?
Present.
Everybody's here, okay. Are there any questions for the, is the petitioner here?
Yes, right here.
Okay, why don't you come on up? Are there any questions from the liquor commission? Or the board regarding this petitioner?
I don't hear anything. Is this a new cafe, or is it one that's already there?
Um, there was one there that has been closed for two, three years.
Okay.
Um, and now, he's the chosen one.
He's the chosen one, okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns? Okay, do you have any questions for us, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, so all the paperwork's in order, Madam Clerk? Okay. Chair accept a motion to release a license to the petitioner?
So moved. Second.
With a motion to second to release the license, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Commissioner Arnett?
Aye.
Motion carried. Chair accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried, we're adjourned. Like to call the first meeting of the month of February, on February 6, 2023, to order. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Trustee Mills?
Present.
Trustee Newell?
Present.
Trustee Palafis?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Gata? Mike?
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present, the gang's all here. Can anybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Trustee Arnett, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Arnett. Move on to item number three, corrections to the audience, this is a time if anybody has a question or concern for the village board or the village staff, for an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time to come forward. Going once, twice, three times, move on. Chair accept a motion to approve the minutes of the January sixteenth, 2023, meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any additions or corrections to the minutes from anybody? Seeing none? We need a roll call, don't we, both? Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Also like a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of January thirtieth, 2023? Is there a motion? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried, the minutes are approved. Move on to item number five, the consent agenda, chair would accept a motion?
Move to approve a consent agenda, A through, A through I.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approval of the following: A, approval of the agenda; B, approval of the schedule of bills for February 6, 2023, in the amount of two million, six hundred, six hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents; C, request board approval and ordinance establishing higher back rates for police and fire personnel for the period February 7, 2023, through December thirty-first, 2023; D, request board approval of an ordinance establishing Village of Hoffman Estates' special service area, twenty-two oh, two-three dash two, twenty-seven, twenty-five seventy-five Higgins Road, and seventeen ninety-five Barrington Road; E, request board approval of a change order, number one, to the contract with Performance Construction and Engineering LLC of Plainfield, Illinois, for the Eagle Way sewer replacement project in the amount of eighty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars, for total not to exceed two million, four hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars; F, request authorization to award a multi-year contract to Modern Midways Inc., Stager, Illinois, for carnival services for the Northwest Fourth Fest; G, request board authorization to extend the 2021 landscape maintenance contract for village-owned sites and state-county readyways to V. Cardenas Landscaping, East Dundee, Illinois, low bid, in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars; H, request board authorization to one, way formal bidding, and to purchase water meters from Water Resources Inc., Elgin, Illinois, sole supplier, in an amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand dollars; I, request board authorization to one, way formal bidding, and to purchase replacement forklift from Equipment Depot, Atasca, Illinois, government joint purging contract, in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Does anyone want any of these items pulled? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Move on to President's report, uh, believe we have some proclamations, Madam Clerk? Who's got the first one?
I do. Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed towards the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the fire department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training, positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for twenty-five years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Thursday, February sixteenth, 2023, as Daniel Kurzewinski Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, we appreciate the great job that Daniel's done for us for twenty-five years. Uh, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Chief? Let me give Daniel our thanks. Got a nice turnout here tonight. Who's next?
I am. Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the fire department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for twenty-five years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims Thursday, February sixteenth, 2023, as Daniel Groby Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, we appreciate the, the great job that Daniel, another Daniel, does for our fire department for, for twenty-five years. Call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Thanks, Chief, give Daniel our thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, hello? Of welfare and safety of the citizens. Okay, we got to go.
Remnants.
And safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the fire department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for twenty-five years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Thursday, February sixteenth, 2023, as Mark Lauder Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, we appreciate the great job Mark has done also for twenty-five years. Uh, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Mark, come on, come on up.
Very nice of Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You gotta get a picture, Mark. You get in here too. Who's, who's with you, Mark?
My wife, Susan.
Susan, welcome. You serve also. Okay, thank you. Come on, everybody, come on up. Chief? Come on up, guys. The rest of you guys, come on up.
Come on, guys.
Don't just wait and get to the door.
Forget it, we're gonna be covered up here.
The wall's still standing, it's fine.
Call people on that side, short people on this side.
Shut off the lights.
I know, I was waiting. You know, none of us. That's okay. I know, we gotta switch it around.
Okay, who's next?
I am next. Um, Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas American Heart Month is a campaign sponsored each year by the American Heart Association that raises awareness about heart disease and how people prevent it at home and within their communities, and whereas research shows that heart disease is the leading cause of death for men and women in the United States, and every year, one in four deaths are caused by heart disease. According to the American Heart Association, a heart-healthy diet and physical activity from an early age lowers cholesterol, and if it is continued throughout the lifespan, should reduce the risk of heart disease in adults, and whereas residents of the Village of Hoffman Estates represent a diverse cross-section of the American public who could benefit from education regarding how to promote a healthy heart from an early age. This knowledge could include current scientific facts related to the heart, how to keep the heart healthy, and the importance of incorporating exercise into children's daily lives, and whereas this knowledge would assist the residents of the Village of Hoffman Estates in making informed decisions on healthy food choices and physical activity to optimize their physical and emotional well-being, and take a proactive role in parents' management of their children's heart and overall health. And whereas information on how to keep the heart healthy will likely translate into healthier lifestyle choices for children, such as increased exercise, healthier food choices, and positive interaction activities with others, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims February, 2023, as American Heart Month in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and hereby encourages all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, schools, and public and private institutions in the Village of Hoffman Estates to promote awareness of heart-healthy facts, support programs and policies that advocate, advocate heart-healthy awareness, and provide opportunities for all to participate in awareness and education of heart health as related to optimal physical and emotional well-being in children.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, um, obviously, the heart is one of the vital organs in your body, so we need to take care of our hearts. You want to call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Who's got the next one?
I do. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas when someone close to us passes away, grief often makes even the simplest tax difficult, tasks difficult, because funerals tend to be planned immediately following a death, this often means that family members must dive right into planning a large event, making significant final, financial decisions while dealing with enormous grief, and whereas for people who are young and healthy, putting together a funeral plan may sound like a foreign and unnecessary concept, but there are many advantages to sharing and recording your funeral preferences regardless of your age, an estate plan, a collection of legal documents that details your final wishes about your assets, healthcare decisions, and finances, is also helpful in the planning process, and will help your family make decisions easier based on what you want to have happen, and whereas the more of your funeral that you plan out in advance, the easier it will be for your family to execute on your instructions and wishes. Prepaying spares your survivors the burden of arranging payment, it also keeps you in control of the costs and ensures that your wishes can and will be carried out, and whereas pre-planning your own funeral can provide peace of mind to you and your family, it lessens the burden on loved ones by having a plan in place while allowing you to put your preferences in writing, it also gives you time to think about how you want others to remember you, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim February, 2023, as Preplanning Awareness Month in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and hereby encourage all citizens in the Village of Hoffman Estates to not be afraid to talk about pre-planning and to seek out information that can help you and your family make important decisions about funeral planning and estate planning in advance.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, um, obviously, this is a very important issue that, uh, we all should, uh, think about very seriously, obviously, and it does save a lot of grief if you have the plans made already. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Do you want to come up, come on up and talk about the importance of this? Just identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Susana Padilla, and, um, I wasn't aware about pre-planning until three months after my husband's passing. I wasn't prepared, I did not know about this benefit, uh, and bottom line, pre-planning, it does take all the emotional decisions away from your loved ones left behind. It was the worst day of my life, my children, at the time that happened, my daughter was five years old, my son was thirteen years old, and basically, I was a chicken running around with a head cut off. Did all the decisions that need to be done, the, how much, and most importantly, I wasn't there for my children consoling them, instead I was worried about the logistics of the funerals. So, pre-planning not only takes the emotional decisions away from your loved ones, but when you pre-plan, you get to lock in the prices, you freeze the prices, and that was a big wow factor for me as well. So I appreciate you, Mayor, for taking the time to listen to the importance of pre-planning, and just to be aware, and I decided to be a spokesperson, an advocate for pre-planning, because it is a different experience, people will take control, and, um, you give back more time for the families to be consoling to one another, instead of dealing with the logistics at the worst possible time of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to, come on up and, come on. Children want to come up too? Come on. They're saying no, no, just, yeah, just shake hands with everybody and then get the picture. Want to get a picture here?
Want your kids in the picture too?
He's gonna take a picture. Hey, whatever. Well, thank you. Do you have a couple of resignations, Louisa Santos Vany from the Sustainability Commission? Chair will accept a motion?
So moved with regret.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. Marina Azal from the Planning and Zoning Commission, chair would accept a motion?
Moved to, to, except with regret.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod?
Aye, motion carried. We do have the item I wanted to mention, that the Lions Club of Schaumburg Hoffman Estates is partnering with Gigi's Playhouse on a food donation drive this Saturday at Gigi's. Please stop by between nine AM and one PM for the Super Bowl Food Raiser event to benefit families throughout our community. Gigi's Playhouse is located at twenty-three fifty West Higgins Road, next door to Garibaldi, so the Lions Club is also collecting eyeglasses, hearing aids, and old phones. We do have some, some things from the past couple of weeks, um, Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, I made a presentation as Travis Jefferson School with the Chiefs, uh, Wax and Colley, they were the head of the show, much more so than the mayor, but everybody loves seeing everybody explaining what they do and what the village government does. And, uh, one, Thursday the twenty-sixth, I attended the Northwest Municipal Conference Transportation Committee, and, uh, Monday, January thirtieth, I went to Whitley School, visited the fourth grade, and, uh, again, we had Chiefs Wax and Colley with us, it was great. Line Family Services, their share, uh, group, uh, who is, is headquarters in Hoffman Estates, had their leadership meeting here at the Village Hall, and that evening, we had a special village board meeting. On Tuesday, the thirty-first, we had the Spark Dispensary Ribbon Cutting, uh, the first cannabis, uh, business in the Village of Hoffman Estates, uh, I guess it's legal, right? Wednesday the first, we had the executive board meeting in the Northwest Municipal Conference, and, uh, on Thursday the second, we had the Twelfth Annual Celebration of Excellence from the Hoffman Estates Chamber, and it's always a great event. Uh, Saturday, I did get to speak at Dolores Hossi's Celebration of Life, she's an amazing woman, we all know her very well, and she just lit up the, any room she walked into, she was really something, she was always positive, always happy, no matter what happened in her life, and she's a real inspiration for, I think, all of us. This afternoon, we had the Northwest and West Central Municipal Conference briefing with the president of the Cook County Board, Tony Prankwinkle, and other folks, and, um, that's about it for me for now. Let's move on to trustee comments, starting with trustee Arnett.
Thank you, I'd like to congratulate the three firefighters, um, on their proclamations, um, hopefully they have a lot more years to come, and, uh, also, on the twentieth, I attended the sectional cheerleading, um, congratulations to Connet, Hoffman, and Frem for all making it down to, um, the next step, which is Bloomington this coming weekend, good luck to all of them, and also, just to make everybody aware, something happened a couple of months ago, um, be prepared that there are people with, calling people who are saying that they're with ComEd, um, they are not with ComEd, so there's a big scam going around, ComEd is aware of it, so just be careful if you get a, a phone call from ComEd and they're trying to take money from you, so just hang up and call ComEd right away. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Stanton?
Thank you. On, uh, the seventeenth of January, I was able to attend the senior luncheon sponsored by our Commission for Senior Citizens, and we helped pass out food. On the twenty-first of January, I was here to attend the coffee with the board. On the thirty-first, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Spark Dispensary at Five Golf Road, and on the second, I was attending the Twelfth Annual Celebration of Excellence Awards, which was put on by our Hoffman Estates Chamber of Commerce, and that's it.
Okay, trustee Mills?
Uh, pretty, a lot of the same things, on the seventeenth, I was able to help out at the senior luncheon, it was always great to see all the seniors there enjoying lunch and entertainment. The twenty-fourth, I had a Chamber of Commerce meeting, uh, for a new, new idea they've come up with to have a car show over at, um, the parking lot by Garibaldi's, and that was an enjoyable meeting, and hopefully, the Chamber will be able to pull it off and have a great car show that, in August, uh, more details to come on that. On the thirty-first, also attended the, the Spark Dispensary Ribbon Cutting, and on the second, uh, was also at the Chamber Celebration of Excellence Awards, congratulations to the winners that evening. On the third, I also attended Dolores Hossi's, uh, wake that evening, and as the mayor said, she was, uh, she was a real force when it came to the seniors, and always had a smile no matter where she was, and her daughter is pretty much the same as her, she was very talkative and, and enjoy, and, nice to meet her, but I'm not under those circumstances. Haven't been able to make some of the Saturday events because of my granddaughter's participation in the Sycamore High School bowling team, and as a personal note, I want to wish them luck, because they go to sectionals this coming weekend. Go Sycamore.
The Mills family bloodline in bowling continues.
She's getting there.
Trustee Gata, do you have any comments? Trustee Gata?
Uh, no comment.
Okay, trustee Palafis?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have a couple, uh, exciting upcoming events around the Economic Development Commission over the next couple of weeks, uh, one is a sea-level breakfast, looking forward to, and the other, uh, is with a bunch of the Realtor folks at the arena later this week, so looking forward to that, and, uh, seeing some people after a long winter break, um, other than that, that's all for me.
Okay, trustee Newell?
Okay, uh, going back to January seventeenth, attended the Hanover Township Awards, uh, on the twenty-first, a coffee with the board along with the other trustees and the mayor, we had a real nice, uh, turnout for that one. Uh, on the twenty-eighth, uh, along with trustee Palafis and trustee Arnett, the cheerleader competition at Connet, uh, good luck to all of them going forward, uh, continue on, and hopefully they make it down to, uh, Florida and Disney, that would be wonderful. Uh, on the thirtieth, uh, attended the board workshop with everyone, um, and the second, the Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner, and congrats to everyone that, you know, participated and won on that one, on the third, of course, the wake for Dolores Hossi, um, very, very sweet lady, I've known her, and, um... And like the mayor said, she could walk into a room and make it light up, even if it's a cloudy day. She just had that type of a personality. And I'm not sure if we're supposed to mention this, but congrats to Grandma Bev.
Oh, yeah. Grandma Bev, congratulations.
I didn't know if you wanted it to be on TV, so.
It's too late now.
It's out there.
And a spill of beans.
I did. That's all I have.
We'll move on to 6C Village Manager's Report.
No report.
Okay. 6D Village Clerk's Report.
Okay, during the month of January, 240 FOIA's were processed and 68 passports. So, we haven't had that many passports in, over a year. So, people are getting out there traveling again, and we just got notice that they extended the time of processing. So, it's, it's a little longer again now. I think it, I have to think now, five to seven weeks, I think it is for expedited and six to nine, something like that for routine. So, it's, it's back up there again. But people are traveling and good for them. And yes, I'm a grandma. Anybody wants to see pictures, come see me.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Committee reports, transportation and road improvement. Trustee Mills?
Transportation and Road Improvement Committee will be meeting next Monday evening here at Village Hall beginning at 7:00 p.m. After our roll call and approval of the minutes from January 9th. We just have one item under new business. That's a request authorization to award contract for Phase 1 Engineering Services of the Ganon Drive Invest in Cook Project. An RFQ review is ongoing. We will then accept our, for information only purposes, our Transportation Division Monthly Report, have a President's Report, no items in review, and we will adjourn.
Thank you. Planning, Building, and Zoning, trustee Stanton?
Thank you. Immediately following transportation and road improvement, we'll meet here at the Village Hall and have a roll call, establish an accord. Once that is established, we'll have approval of the minutes for January 9th, 2023. We have three items under new business. First is request by Bell Tire for a courtesy review for a tire and service store on the southwest corner of Higgins Road in Ganon Drive, which was the former BMO Bank site. Two is request by The Prime Company for a courtesy review of a multifamily development located at 2350 Higgins Road in Barrington Square Town Center, which was the former Menards site. Third is request approval of an agreement with Odyssey for radio and digital advertising for the Village of Hoffman Estates. Be in agreement with NBC Universal for television and streaming digital advertising for the Village of Hoffman Estates. And see in agreement with iHeart Media for television and streaming digital advertising for the Village of Hoffman Estates. Following that, we'll have three reports for information only. First is the Planning Division Monthly Report. Second is Code Enforcement Division Monthly Report. Third is the Economic Development and Tourism Monthly Report. Following is the President's Report, if there's anything more to be said. We have nothing in other items in review at this time, and then we will adjourn.
Thank you. General Administration Personnel, trustee Arnett?
Thank you. Immediately following the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee, we have called to order General Administration and Personnel Committee to meet on February 13th, 2023. We will begin with a roll call, followed by the approval of minutes for January 9th, 2023. We have one new item under new business, request authorization to award replacement of video editing systems to Key Code Media out of Schaumburg, Illinois, in amount not to exceed $39,980. We'll then move into reports for information only. Number one is a cable TV monthly report. Number two is a human resources management monthly report. Number three is a legislative operations and outreach monthly report. We'll then see if there's any other in President's Report, if there's anything in other or items in review, and then we'll call for an adjournment.
Thank you, trustee Arnett. Move on to seven, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendations. Chairperson Combs?
Good evening, how are you?
Planning and Zoning Commission requests board concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation outlined below and board approval of an ordinance granting a special use preliminary and final site plan and variations from the zoning code for the Commonwealth Edison Substation located at 2480 Pembroke Avenue. First motion had to do with the motion to approve a special use and preliminary and final site plan amendment, but was nine As to absent.
Chair would accept the motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Are we doing these separately?
Yes, yes.
So, I'm going to have three ordinances for one item?
Are we talking about item number two or item A?
We separated them out because not all the votes were the same.
Oh, because of the, the?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's one ordinance.
For one and two?
Is that two or one?
I'm sorry, on two.
Oh, okay. We're just on one right now.
I know, I jumped ahead.
Okay, do we have a motion of a second yet?
Yeah. Gary and I.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
No, wait a minute. It's A, one, two, and three. So, for, let's get my microphone on. So, for 7A, it's one ordinance.
Correct.
Not three. Planning and zoning broke it out to three, and it's only is one ordinance on the ordinance.
Correct. So, within 7A, there's several items, subsection 1, subsection 2, subsection 3. The Planning and Zoning Commission took all those up separately for votes because, as the chairperson mentioned, item 3 regarding the barbed wire fencing was, there was a disagreement. But because they all passed, ultimately, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they are rolled into one ordinance for your consideration tonight.
Trustee Palafis?
Chairman Combs, regarding the fencing, we held Microsoft to the same standard, didn't we?
Yes.
Well, then, I think we need to do the same with ComEd. It's my personal opinion.
Okay, anyone else? Well, first of all, we need to change this motion, correct?
I think so.
I think we discuss, you guys discuss all three of the items and then make a motion. And if you want 7A3 polled, then the ordinance is going to be changed and it'll come back at another date or whatever.
We can, or we can amend it tonight.
Yeah.
What's the will of the Village Board?
Do you want Pete to opine on the fence at all?
Yeah, you want to opine on the fence, Pete?
Not really.
Who's the lawyer's opine?
Don't you like how we complicate things?
I was hoping I could talk about the ordinance, but actually, no, my only comment is that, you know, this particular situation, I know one of the factors, and ComEd also has representatives here, was that the portion that they're requesting to replace with a new chain link section is, is less visible from the public right of way. It's really on the, kind of the backside of the substation, and it's not highly visible. So, I just, that, that, that would be a little bit of what's different versus some of the other parts of the site that are visible from a public way.
Okay. Yeah, trustee Palafis?
If we held Microsoft to the same standard, which has the same visibility issues, I don't think it matters. It's a standard, so.
Okay, anyone else?
We're really not on this topic yet. That's number three.
We are, because it's one ordinance.
No, we're saying it all is.
Well, then, we should read it all into the record now.
Exactly.
Right.
Let's read it all into the record, then we'll ask our questions.
And redo the motions.
Sure.
Want to withdraw your first motion?
I'll withdraw the first motion.
And I'll withdraw the second.
Okay.
Start over again.
Substitute motion here.
Eva, you want to just read the whole thing in? Thank you.
I charged double time for this.
Yeah, I know.
That's okay.
Okay. Planning and Zoning Commission requests board concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation outlined below and board approval of an ordinance granting a special use preliminary and final site plan and variation from the zoning code for the Commonwealth Edison Substation located at 2480 Pembroke Avenue. One, motion to approve a special use and preliminary and final site plan amendment. Motion to approve the following variations from zoning code. A, a variation from Section 9-9-1-E to allow a building height of 66 feet instead of the permitted height of 45 feet. B, a variation from Section 9-9-1-D-4 to permit a front yard setback of 16 feet instead of the permitted 30 feet for the equipment structure, a front yard setback of 16 feet instead of the permitted 30 feet for the pump house, and a front yard setback of 20 feet instead of the permitted 30 feet for the auxiliary transformers, and a variation from Section 9-3-3-C-3 to allow a fence to be installed in the front yard. Three, motion to approve a variation from Section 9-3-3-B-1 to permit barbed wire on top of a fence. And that's it.
Okay. Chair would accept the motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion on these?
The petitioner is here too, mayor.
Okay, good. Trustee Mills?
Is, now that this is going to be such a larger facility that was originally envisioned, is this to help with the Microsoft spot?
Yes.
So, will they still be needing to put up a substation over there?
Yes, yes. There's a substation expansion at this existing substation, and then there's a new substation at the Microsoft property.
Okay, but this is to do only the part that's by Pembroke?
Right, right. That this approval is only for the Pembroke site.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Stanton?
The fence, is this going around the whole perimeter of the property?
No, it's just in the rear of it. We're still at the palisade in the front. The rear being the part that runs along Barrington Road and the expressway.
So, why do they barb wire there?
Um, it's cheaper.
Than putting up what, the higher fence?
Than a palisade fence.
Okay.
On that. But please note that if this is approved, you'll never be able to change it as long as they're there.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything? Trustee Palafis?
Aside from the fact that it would make sense to move the substation all on Microsoft's property, I think we should maintain the standard for the fence.
Which is?
Which is the palisade, which is what we held Microsoft to, which is about six to seven times the size of the site, so.
Do you want to make a motion to amend the?
I'll make a motion that we amend the item 7, 3, to align to the committee's recommendation of a palisade fence.
We did, excuse me, just a correction. We didn't recommend it. It was a close vote.
Right, you don't recommend, sorry. Yeah, what, basically, what you'd be doing, trustee Palafis, in the ordinance, item, under Section 3, item 3. Yes. Waiver from 10-5-3-K to allow the use, oh, strike, strike that, that was the wrong one. 2D variation from Section 933B1 to permit barbed wire on top of a fence would be struck. So, there's, you're not necessarily permitting the other fence, you're just saying they can't, there's no relief from a barbed wire fence. Okay.
I have a question, though. If we do this, isn't there part of the property that already has a chain link and barbed wire on it? Does that cover that part that's already existing?
Well, the chain link would remain because that's a separate waiver that that's not being discussed. I think right now, we're just discussing the barbed wire. But you're talking about the, the existing.
I think Gary brought up both, didn't you? The chain link and the barbed wire. He wanted the palisade all the way around.
That's the standard.
Do we have a second to that? This is just done to amend it, not the whole motion.
I kind of would like to hear from Commonwealth Edison before I make a second.
Okay, Mr. Turnage, you want to come on up?
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. Just for the record, my name is Joseph Turnage, and I'm the External Affairs Manager for ComEd. I have today with me my project team, so we're available to answer any questions. We want to make sure that we address trustee Palafis's question regarding the differences between the substation that we, that we had to put together for Microsoft in addition to the one that we are looking to put together now in terms of the barbed wire and the different fencing, palisade, et cetera. So, so I'll bring up one of my representatives now, and this is Scott Safe. He's our legal counsel on this project, and we'll talk through and try to answer most of your questions here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, just want to introduce name and address for the record.
For the record, Scott, Scott Safe, the law firm Sidley Austin Land Use Counsel for Commonwealth Edison Company. I'm going to also let Christina Deutschler introduce herself because we'll probably act in a tad.
Christina Deutschler, Commonwealth Edison Security Manager. My address is 1919 Swift Drive in Oakbrook.
So, I'll, I'll provide some introductory comments, and then Christina may want to add. This substation is a regional substation connected to the regional grid. It's a very different substation than the Microsoft substation, which is a single customer substation only. This one is owned and operated by ComEd as part of the national grid. The Microsoft substation is, the land is owned by Microsoft. The substation will be operated by ComEd, but it's a different animal. The, the barbed wire and chain link fence, as you heard from staff, is located to the south and to the west. It's an area that is not visible. It's 30 feet below Barrington Road and also below the tollway. And so, Christina will talk about why the barbed wire is important there. It is, there was a cost issue mentioned, but there's a lot more to it, and we won't take all night, but just a few words of explanation. The front-facing portion of the fence facing Pembroke and facing the pace driveway is a palisade fence with, in essence, a mesh backing which is solid. So, we really are talking about the non-visible portions of the substation. I'll let you add, Christina, to, to the importance of the barbed wire.
Sure. So, the substations that are originally connected to the grid have been tiered in order of criticality to the regional grid and the national grid. And those tiers take into account customer counts, critical customers, the number of feeds going in, number of feeds going out. So, based on those tiers, security standards were developed. So, you may have seen some substations that have 12-foot tall prison-type fences, ultra-critical to the grid, and then we graduate down to less critical substations or substations that are still critical but can easily be restored or more quickly be restored. So, that's the kind of substation we're talking about on Pembroke Avenue. Our standard is a seven-foot chain link fence with a one-foot Y-shaped barbed wire on, on Y-shaped outriggers. This presents a deter and delay factor that's important to us because we have other technologies. We have technologies in depth. So, with the chain link fence, with the barbed wire, we're looking to deter and delay people who would want to climb over, cut through, or dig under the fence. We want to delay them. We're not trying to cancel it. I mean, it's going to happen, but we also have technology on the other side of that fence with this few seconds of delay that the fencing provides would allow the technology to work better to detect an intruder into the station. So, the delay is important to us on a climb over with the barbed wire.
Thank you.
So, my question to you is then is, can you see the fence easier if it's just chain link and the barbed wire? Or see anybody that's approaching it or trying to get through it other than a palisade fence?
So, part of the problem, or why we're so firm on the barbed wire is it's in the back of the station, right? It's not visible from Pembroke. It's not in a public area, other than when you're, you know, on the bike path. So, having the delay would allow us to see better with analytic cameras that are located inside the station. It would allow more pixels on target, and I don't want to be technical, but it allows the camera to identify that that is a person versus a leaf or a bag or an animal. So, that's the delay factor we're going for here. And we obviously would like to do this all around the station, but recognize the aesthetics and, and what your future vision is for the Pembroke site. So, we've mitigated the loss of the barbed wire on the Pembroke site by adding more internal controls, but it's not as effective because now they have to be inside the station to be detected. So, I'm counting on the public view and the deterrence of the ability to be seen to keep people away from the Pembroke side or the palisade side of the fence where I don't have that opportunity in the back. Does that, does that help answer your question?
Sure.
Yes, trustee Palafis?
Do you think you have greater security than a Microsoft data center? That we maintain the same standard?
So, like Scott said, the Microsoft data center. So like Scott said, the Microsoft data center isn't.
I don't care about the ComEd part, I'm talking about your video surveillance cameras, the pixelization, the barbed wire, the fencing, the deterrence.
Well, I know, I know what the ComEd substation security engineering looks like for the Microsoft data center, I don't know what the rest of Microsoft looks like.
I'm just saying, that's what we held them to a standard to. Those are two nodes on the Azure Cloud Network that hold, I don't know how many exabytes of data, so. We understand your points, but you already have a solution for the rest of the property that is adequate, that maintains the standard, which is all I was asking for.
The only other comment I'd make is, we did spend about an hour, or the chairwoman might correct me, but a lengthy time going through all this, the feeling of at least the majority of the commission was that this was a type, that the barbed wire is used nationally, it's, you, you can see that in the minutes, and there was an understanding, even the village has used it for its own infrastructure facilities. So I'll let Christina add any other comment, but we, we appreciate the chance to address you.
Okay, any other questions on this? We do have a motion, we don't have a second on the proposed amendment.
What exactly? What exactly was the second amendment, was the amendment?
Just to strike the barbed wire. So it's consistent with.
Out Section 3?
Yes. So it essentially maintains the standard.
So, in other words, you want to take out Section 3 for a separate vote?
Well, yeah, because the ordinance is all packaged as one.
Except, again, that just has to do with the barbed wire that would still leave you with the chain link fence.
No, I'm confused.
All right, so I think there's two items of the ordinance, just for clarification, and in the, in the draft ordinance, Section 2D under Section 3, so Section 3, number 2, Item D, talks about the barbed wire on top of fence. There's a variation that was sought and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item number 3 underneath that talks about a waiver to allow the use of chain link fences. So I guess the question for Trustee Plafis is, are you, does your proposed substitute motion include striking both 2D and 3, or just 2D?
Well, 2D and 3 together maintain the standard, was my point.
Okay. Trustee Newell, did you have something?
Yes, there, there was a picture that we received, okay? And according to this picture, if this, this is the Palisades fence, now the, the top, these posts or something, are those sharp? Or are they rounded? Because if you're going to have these sharp points, then do you really need the barbed wire? I mean, if you put that all around, you've got the sharp points, if somebody was going to try to climb that, I, I don't.
The barbed wire is just on top of the chain link portion, it's not on top of the Palisade.
So this would replace the barbed wire and the chain link.
Okay. Is that this picture you're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, this, this is the picture.
This is the one that they're showing on the diagram.
Yeah.
If you look at the one on the left.
It should, yeah.
Right.
The top of the fence.
Right.
Plays out.
Right.
But there's no barbed wire on the Palisade.
Yeah.
But so these, these spokes, spokes are on top of the solid-looking part of this, right?
Correct.
You have this portion, and then the spokes go over this, correct? ComEd, you want to explain, a comment on that?
There's a mesh behind the Palisade.
Yeah, that's what this looks like. This is the mesh behind the Palisades.
Right, so the Palisade fence are the slats, they're flat slats, and those pointy things are all one slat, right? But they're thin, and they're, but you can, they're bendable, and they're not, uh.
But you can't see them on this portion.
No, you're looking at the backside.
That's the.
The mesh is the backside. That's the, if you were inside the substation, that's what you would see.
Okay, so this is what you will see on the outside.
Correct.
But you would see this through the, the spacing, correct?
Well, the mesh is going to prevent the spacing. You're, you know, the mesh is opaque. Yeah.
This mesh?
Yes.
That's what I said. You will see this in between the spokes.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And to, to go further on what Trustee, yeah, with Trustee Newell saying, isn't, aren't those spokes a deterrent right there?
They can be a deterrent, but it's not our standard, it's not what we've tested, it's not what we've measured out ASTM standards-wise, we've measured out barbed wire and chain link fence, and that would fit for this tier of station.
Is that barbed wire and chain link the same height or the same length as the Palisades?
So it is the same height, it's, the Palisades is eight feet in total, the chain link and barbed wire would be seven feet of chain link plus one foot of barbed wire. The length, I believe, we're asking for is just a small, a portion of the backside.
How much do we know?
170 feet, I believe, I'm sorry.
No, I don't know the, the number of feet, it's the length behind, just south of where the western portion of the pace driveway is, I'm sorry, and the portion, the, a smaller length along Barrington Road, below Barrington Road, below the viaduct, and then a portion of the southern property line against the solid wall, mostly solid wall of the industrial building. I could look at the feet, the number of linear feet, as you talk, but I don't have the number.
It's on page 93 of our packet.
security deterrent the same as this is for the chain link?
That's what they're, what do you mean 93? I don't have a 93.
I have a.
Oh, you're talking about in the packet itself, that's not, these aren't numbered like that, that's on, when you have it online.
It's, it's this multicolor.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah. Is that this?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's it.
Okay.
Any other questions? We do have a motion, there was no second.
I still am not clear on what, on the motion, is it that we're pulling out to vote separately on three?
No, you're amending, Trustee Mills, your, Trustee Plafis has made a motion to amend the ordinance to strike the variation for barbed wire and strike the use of chain link fencing.
So 2D and 3.
Are stricken from the proposed ordinance.
To maintain the standard of the rest of the property, and what we did with Microsoft.
The, the only other comment I will make is, and again, I'm not here to speak on behalf of ComEd, this is a regional substation for our community and others, and so this is not a private, a private use like the one that's on the Microsoft site, this is one that does serve our community, so just to weigh that as you make your decision.
Well, but within that, it's also what we're trying to do with the greater area and the aesthetics of that area, within some of our strategic goals.
It is, and one of our strategic, strategic goals too is to reinforce the work that ComEd is doing as well, so I just, I know, obviously, this is, this is your call, just throwing that out there for.
Trustee Mills.
All right, final question. Which provides the better security? Truthfully, I want to know what provides the better security to protect the area.
So the chain link affords the thermal analytic cameras more of an opportunity to do their job, because they are more transparent than the Palisades with a wire mesh. So from a technical perspective, the chain link is better for the cameras. From a, hey, I want to cut all this fence up and get inside, obviously, chain link is, is, is a kind of an easy.
Wouldn't it, yeah, it would be easier to cut through a chain link fence than these other things.
It would be, but we have the cut times on Palisades, we have the cut times on chain link, both of them can be cut through, we can detect the guy better, faster with the chain link, because the thermal cameras have more opportunity to capture the pixels necessary to all make an alarm, to go back to the security operations center so we can call law enforcement. So when you balance the depth of all of the different tools, the thermal cameras are really the most important thing going on at this substation.
What is, which? Yeah, which of the fabrics is more security? I mean, I'm not, I don't care about aesthetics, I'm caring about the safety of a substation to protect our residents.
Right, and you're asking me to take apart a, a multi-layered security system and tell you that the Palisades is better, but it makes the cameras less effective.
Do you have as many thermal cameras on the other sides as you do back there, then?
We do, yeah. But they don't detect the intruder as quickly, because the intruder has to penetrate the opacity of the mesh, they have to be completely inside to, for us to pick them up, where with the chain link, we have more of an opportunity to just catch the motion.
Tell them how long it takes for somebody to go through that chain link fence.
You're speaking to the microphone.
Answer the question.
I was asking her to expound on the amount of time that it would take somebody to cut through the chain link fence, or climb over it and put a jacket over the barbed wire and get inside, and then either security reporting's on the East Coast, so they ask go there, and then it goes back to our local police, so.
So I'm not going to be able to comment publicly on cut times for stuff, or climb over times. But it is true that the Security Operations Center is outside of Baltimore, Maryland, but they view our stuff in real time, and we have relationships with the village, the state's police department.
Thank you.
Okay. We still have an amended motion with no second. Does anybody want to second it, or is it going to die?
Who made the motion? Oh, okay.
I think, I think it has expired. Do we have a main motion? That was so long ago, I don't even remember.
We do.
Okay, we do. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
I'm sorry, what was the main motion?
To approve the ordinance as presented.
A, B, and C. All three sections with barbed wire and chain link.
Barbed wire and chain link.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to keep calling names. Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
No.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you all.
Carry on, chairperson, comms.
You really want me to? Let's see here.
Yeah.
Where were we? Planning and Zoning Commission requests board concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and board approval of an ordinance granting a master site plan for White Castle located 1100 West Gulf Road, but was eight days to absent.
Wait, you got the one before that, don't you?
I do.
B.
Oh, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Unless you want us to pull it apart.
I try to make your life as difficult as possible, and you don't make mine easy, so I don't know. Planning and Zoning Commission requests concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and board approval of an ordinance granting a site plan amendment for White Castle located 1100 West Gulf Road.
Eight days to absent.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission requests board concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and board approval for an ordinance granting a master site plan for White Castle located 1100 West Gulf Road, but was eight days to absent.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. You have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission requests board concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and board approval of an ordinance granting a preliminary and final site plan for Bell, excuse me, Bellworks Town Homes located at 1705 Lakewood Boulevard, but was seven a's, one nay.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this one? Trustee Mills.
I just want to bring up a, a comment and question to staff. I was a little taken back by the amount of conditions that we have on this proposal. It's a bit out of the ordinary, and I would just want to reiterate that all of these would have to be met before you would release any types of permits, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
And I would appreciate that the board would be made aware of when these are met, before anything else takes place, because I just feel we need to know what's going on here with these. I know they're all pretty, pretty common types of issues to be dealt with.
Right.
But I definitely would want to be kept informed of them.
Not, that's not a problem at all.
Actually, they're not normal. I don't feel that they met the parameters of final site plan approval. Our packets were deficient. You have more in your packet today than we had in ours, it was presented at our meeting for the missing pages. There are a lot of things that weren't discussed, we did not get any HOA documents, we did not get the full feeling for the development. They said that it's going to be white siding and a brick veneer with an alternating plan between the groups of townhomes, but that's the whole development, that's 164 townhomes, and they're all going to be white with black trim and brick. I'm not sure if that even complies with our manatee, anti-manatee provisions. We had no finishes presented for the inside, if you remember, Seasons had given us an excellent presentation of everything, including the inside finishes, did not get that. No information on schools, sketchy information at best on the parks. The only grass area in the townhouse development is in the front yard. We had asked about solar panel, panels, and they were not sure about that, if they're going to even offer that. And we just feel that there are too many unknowns for final, and I know the majority voted for this, and I was the only one that put it on record as being a no, but there were several other people on the commission that were not happy with the presentation and the lack of information. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Trustee Plafis.
Does staff feel like this is being rushed compared to other developments that have been presented, like Seasons, as she mentioned? Or is it just the thoroughness of one versus the other that was better? No, I, I think the, the Bellworks project, which is a signature piece for the, for the village, we're trying to provide some additional flexibility to the, to own, to the owner in order to get to market, market the property, et cetera. There are no waivers of responsibility at all in what you're approving. So as Ms., as Trustee Mills and I talked about earlier today, and she asked a very pointed question regarding the issuance of building permits, so all those conditions that are in there, and there are several, those all have to be met before we can issue any permits. So there's no waiver of any of the responsibilities of the developer to complete those.
But in turn, what it does is it weakens our process of recommended body, you know, like Chairman Combs said, it, you know, it wasn't as much of a package as we're normally used to seeing.
Look, staff's here. Anybody? Trustee Mills.
I just do not want this to set any type of a precedent as we go forward with all the developments we've got coming in. I mean, it's an excellent project, and one we've looked forward to, it's just too bad we didn't get a little bit more information.
And the other thing that I was questioning too.
And the other thing that I was questioning too, and I, and I do agree with you, I mean, I was really looking forward to this phase of the project, and we do appreciate the fact that they are here, but they've had years to do things that were, to me, very rudimentary, like they could have drafted, at least a draft of an HOA.
Well, of course, there are ways we don't always have to approve anyway. It's more of a legal document between who they sell to and them.
No. It, it would say how the association is supposed to work and the responsibility of the owners in that, which I would think is rather important.
Anyone else have anything?
Well, off of what, off of what Trustee Mills is saying, I think we already set a precedence, and it's the perception of a white glove treatment versus others that work harder to do the right thing.
Trustee Newell.
Well, I, I know Trustee Mills mentioned that, you know, she'd like the board to be aware of it, but what, what do we set up? You know, a monthly report that says, hey, we've met A of one, I mean, there's 20, what was it?
Twenty.
Twenty items, you know, hey, we're meeting this or we're meeting that. I mean, and then all of a sudden find out that, oh geez, we didn't meet five of them, but we got to get this done because we can't go forward.
Also, what can you do about it? Nothing.
Well, hang on, hang on. We're, we're, let's be clear here. We're not going to issue a permit until all of these conditions are met. All right? Period, end of story. And we can package up a spreadsheet when we get ready to issue a permit. We can provide the information however you would like back to the board. We're happy to do that. If you want to see an ongoing report of the status of those, we're happy to do that as well. But I, I don't want any insinuation that these conditions aren't going to be met. They will be met.
I have confidence that these staff will make sure that every condition is met prior to permits being issued, and I support the project as presented. Anybody else have anything? We do have a motion, a second, don't we, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Can you call the roll?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Plaphis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
I will say aye, but I am disappointed in the presentation. This, if, like you, when I was the chairman of the plant commission, this would be ridiculous to put before us, but I also understand other, what needs to be done here, I guess. So aye.
And Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission requests board concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and board approval of an ordinance granting a preliminary final plan of subdivision for the Bellworks subdivision located at 2000 Center Drive, but was eight days to absent.
Chair to accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this one? Seeing no discussion, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Plaphis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission requests board concurrence with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation and board approval of an ordinance granting a preliminary concept site plan for Bellworks Apartments located at 1705 Lakewood Boulevard, but was eight days to absent.
Chair to accept a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Trustee Mills.
When this project comes back, this is just a concept plan at this point. It's not made in stone. I would hope that we do not have 20 conditions at that point.
I agree.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing nothing else, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Plaphis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to, eh, additional business. Request board approval of an ordinance amending section 8-3-222.